Mayor Tim Smith is absent and therefore as the council president I'll be running the meeting. So we'll start by standing up and give the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and that is well, delivering justice for all. Thank you very much for that. Is there any public comment that has to do with any items that are not on the agenda? If there are, please limit your conversations to less than two minutes.
It's just us and Josh right now.
So nothing there? Okay, so let's make a move into you Chip, first reading amendments to zoning laws. And by the way, thank you for taking that up.
No problem. What we have here is the first reading of zoning amendments. I'm just gonna kinda go to, starting on the second page where you start seeing the underlined words. Just summarizing each amendment. The first amendment, we define what is going to be called a smoke shop in the city under these changes. And, you know, we zone retail uses in general, but we're also able to define certain types of retail, certain types of industrial uses if we want to regulate them, especially as a subset. So we're proposing to define a smoke shop as any place that's devoting 20% or more of their product display or their sales floor to items that are related to tobacco use, bacon use, paraphernalia. Also included in that definition is any place that self-identifies itself as a smoke shop. If they wanted to be called a smoke shop, then they'll be regulated as a smoke shop. The next amendment adds smoke shop as a conditional use in the service industrial district. So what that ends up doing is that if we have a use that's defined, so now this is a defined use, it doesn't show up in any of the other zones, but it shows up in one zone. The effect of that is that this use is now limited only to that zoning district where it's listed. So what this does is it means that smoke shops are only allowed in the service industrial district. And this is the same way we currently treat adult entertainment establishments. So basically, we've defined what a smoke shop is and we've said from now on, they are only allowed, any new smoke shop is only allowed in the service industrial district. We did a couple more things because of some case law that recently came out about towns trying to restrict people's use of home occupation and home industry. And this is a, this might be going a little overboard, but it really has no other effects. It's not gonna harm anything, but we specifically say that in terms of a home occupation or a home industry, you cannot do anything that resembles a smoke shop or a adult entertainment establishment. This came out of a town that wanted to keep someone from operating a commercial kennel as a home occupation, but because of the way their rules were written, the court said that unless they clarified things, they could not stop someone from doing something as a home occupation that wasn't specifically prohibited as a home occupation. So we're gonna be looking at a bunch of uses through this lens, and right now we're dealing with smoke shops. The other thing we've heard, and we've heard for some time from advocates like Amy Brewer in the audience, is one of the issues with the public health effects of tobacco sales, alcohol sales, youth influences, signage. So under Supreme Court rules, we're not allowed to tell someone what their signage can say. That's been determined to be a First Amendment right. But we can determine if you can have signage, where you can have signage, and how much signage you can have. So we have also passed a rule as part of this amendment, the proposed rule, that smoke shops and adult entertainment establishments can now only have 50% of the signage square footage that they otherwise would be granted under our signage rules. And that furthermore, they cannot use flashing lights or integrated lighting as part of these signs. And these signs can only be lit by, you know, like down lighting onto the surface of the sign. And if I'm not mistaken, that is the end of the amendments.
Does that include though, window flashing signs inside?
Right, yeah. Now, we get a little, if someone wants to put something like some TV way into their store and you can see it through their window, we really, you can really only consider something signage if it's up against the window or if it's up on the wall. If they're gonna do something back in their store, there's not much we can do about it. But if it's on the window or if it's on the wall, we can regulate that as a sign.
Does that mean within the entire district, like any shop or just within the district that we're talking about?
So it would be, yeah, so that's an interesting question. The smoke shop that's right now located at the bottom of Fairfield Street, they can continue to operate if this passes. The way you typically do zoning changes is that your grandfather, everyone who existed, who exists at the time, but any new applications now have to follow these rules.
So will he have to take his signage down?
No, his sign will be grandfathered, but if they're ever going to make a substantial change to their signage, if they take that one down and they're gonna do something totally different, they would have to follow these new site guidelines at that location. Also under these rules, they really can't expand that location. They can't bust down a wall and expand into the space next door because you can't expand a non-conforming use. They're going to be limited to where they are right now.
So are you saying a change in ownership wouldn't trigger?
No, zoning doesn't really operate the way licensing does. With licensing, you can do that as a change of ownership, but zoning doesn't really work that way. Zoning runs with the property, whereas a license runs with the business and the property.
Could you show, once this passes, could you show them the new regs and just ask nicely if they'd be interested in complying with any of the suggested changes?
You could.
Or even give them a little incentive to do some? The close proximity to the high school is the biggest concern for me, and a lot of high school students have voiced that concern as well, which I thought was great. So there's a little confusion over that ended up there.
Yeah, you know, I wish we would, I wish we could have foreseen this. We'd been warned for a while about something like this happening and then it happened. The best we can do right now is react to it and think about what we'd like the future to look like. But we could, if there's any way to deal with some, any of the public concerns with the current location, if we can influence them, we would explore it.
It's hard to ask.
Do we need the line "shall not flash" or "he must make..." Isn't that already in our general land use ordinances? Because I know we can't flash in signs according to regulations.
Yeah, but I wanna make sure this one sticks to the specific use. If we change that one somehow, you know, I wanna make sure this one sticks to this particular use.
Because they would already be applicable in that other one. Their smoke signs shouldn't be in any house because that flashes currently.
Yeah, right.
So they should be addressed already.
Yeah, it should be on the list.
Okay, is there any public, I'm sorry, any council discussion? This is the first reading, so we don't need to vote. Is there any comments from the audience on this issue? Yes?
If I could, my name is...
Say your name, please.
Yep.
Have you signed in?
Uh, no.
Okay.
But I will.
So we'll make sure that everyone who's gonna talk today signs in and also states your name for the record.
Yes. Now I can't do both at the same time.
Take your time.
Okay, so my name is Amy Brewer. For those of you who don't know me, many of you do. I coordinate the Franklin Grand Out Tobacco Prevention Coalition. And I just wanna say that I'm really excited that the city has brought forth these proposed changes. I think they do a lot to help protect specifically our high school students who are inundated with ads. I'll also share with you, and I shared with the planning commission, that I was in Fairfield Middle School talking about baking with them, as I do, and kids there, the fifth graders, had noticed the business. The graders aren't necessarily the most observant of the world around them as far as like, oh, do you park them up? Or whatever it might be, they had all noticed this business. So it's really effective and I'm really glad that we can consider taking steps to protect them for future businesses. And I'm always here to support, and I think it's a great idea about asking them to, you know, should this pass, I'm happy to, with the to be, to help have them to walk to a week for flying. If I'm not met them, so we'll see. Yeah? Thanks for the work you do, Amy.
So the business doesn't own the building? Maybe that's a habit that we can pursue. Thank you very much, Amy, for speaking. Anyone else? Okay, thanks for the first reading, Chip. Is there anyone who thinks there needs to be any amendments or changes? Okay, thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
So you're gonna be back up? Well, no, we're not. We're gonna move into a dog hearing, a dog hearing. City manager, would you just give us a quick overview and then we'll have city PD voting.
Chip, under some state law, the council is authorized to hear vicious dog hearings when the circumstances require. Council's discretion is very broad in this area, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. But council's authority here is the confluence of public health and public safety. And you have a lot of options at your disposal, and circumstances require, we hold vicious dog hearings.
Okay, so we have a vicious dog hearing. City PD, someone gonna come up and speak to the issue?
Hi, I'm Paul Tally. So, good evening, my name is Paul Tally. I'm with the San Almond Police Department from the festival I'll be representing today. So we're here for the vicious dog hearing, specifically the dog named Daisy. Daisy is a five-year-old female pit bull type breed, described as being gray with white accents of average size and weighs approximately 50 pounds. Jim Benson, our San Almond Animal Control person, was asked to write a brief synopsis on the calls that he had received through central dispatch related to Daisy's behavior. Jim investigated and determined that he had numerous interactions with Mr. Smith regarding Daisy's aggressive behavior between 2021 and March of 2025. These range from a cat being attacked and later put down by the vet as a result of injuries received during the encounter with Daisy, to people walking their own leashed pets on the sidewalk in front of the Smith's house and having their pet attacked by Daisy. In two of these incidences, the people walking their dogs also reported receiving injuries from being knocked down or scratched in the ensuing fight between Daisy and their animals. Additionally, Jim Benson attempted to educate Mr. Smith on the city ordinances regulating pet ownership in San Almond by issuing the following warnings or tickets to Mr. Smith for not licensing Daisy or letting her run free. So there were three warnings for no license and no proof of vaccination. One warning for dog running at large, four tickets for vicious dog by another animal person that caused an unreasonable fear or bite, two for tickets for being unlicensed, and two tickets for dog at large. Mr. Smith also has a second dog named Cooper who's received two tickets, as well one for dog at large and one for no license. Lastly, Mr. Benson ends his synopsis by saying that Mr. Smith never takes blames for his dog's actions and only blames the attacks and people walking by saying they should be walking on the other side of the street. I would add that we are unaware of any appeals against the tickets issued or payments on them. It is clear that Mr. Smith is unwilling to follow the rules of pet ownership as outlined in the city of San Almond's ordinances. More concerning is his lack of attempts to prevent the attacks and his lack of concern for other citizens simply trying to utilize the sidewalk to walk their leashed pets by the residence without being attacked. Warmer weather is upon us, leading to more foot traffic in the area, especially younger children as they walk to and from school. As the city manager had discussed earlier, or started to discuss, the options that the council has abroad, they can range from obviously doing nothing to issuing conditions that, you know, dog must be leashed, you must license, must be vaccinated, must wear muzzle, to removal from the city or removal from Mr. Smith to euthanize. The spectrum of what you have available is broad.
City PD have a recommendation?
Could be any one of those. I guess we'll leave it up to what you deem is fair. I mean, it's clear that given the multiple attempts to license and so on, he has not done that. Has not appealed those, so remove him from the city at the very least.
I have just one question before I bring up the dog owners. Is there proof of vaccination now?
Not that I'm aware of.
So we had no proof of vaccination?
No.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Tally, Lieutenant Tally. Is the dog owner for Daisy here?
Yes.
Well, sir, Ken, did you both sign in?
No.
Okay, would you both sign in and give us your names, please?
I'm William Smith.
Yeah, we're ready to, take your time. Okay, folks, would you state your name for the council?
William Smith.
William Smith?
Sarah Mail.
Sarah, what's your last name?
Mayo.
Mayo, okay. Hey, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, you heard some testimony by the city PD.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to comment on that or add anything that you'd like to add?
At the beginning, she was vaccinated and stuff, but the vet that she was vaccinated from and the vet that I had shut down, which was a positive thought in my game. We've been looking for another vet, but in the process, we're also moving. We're gonna be moving to Florida. That's why I didn't register with the town or nothing because I figured, do I do that if I'm gonna be leaving? But we need time to save up the money. And I understand that she has attacked dogs, and yes, yes, she did. She broke out the door because my little dog kicked the door and she got up. But now there's extra locks in the door, sir. I mean, that's what I did for right now, I put extra locks in the door so there's no way she's getting out that door once or ever. And I tried to get her around other dogs, which she's okay with a lot of dogs, which her mom has three dogs, and she likes those dogs. And then our stepsister, well, my stepsister, had two dogs, which she's used to those dogs. It's, she's choosy, I guess. I mean, I tried working with her when I first got her, she was off the charts, sir. She came from South Carolina and she was a fighting dog. And I've worked with her quite a bit. I mean, she's super smart, but just getting that aggression with other animals is hard to do. And I've been working as hard as I can.
Mr. Mayo, do you have anything you'd like to add to that? Nothing you'd like to add? Council questions for the owners?
Yeah, I have a question. How do you have Daisy outside when she has to do?
Oh, I get her on harness and leash at all times. I hold her when she's outside, but when she's inside, I mean, she gets out the door a couple times.
When did you install the locks, the extra locks?
Not too long ago. It ain't my place, it's her dad's place.
Was it like the last month or?
It was last week, last Thursday.
So I'm trying to put all the barriers I can create now, but I mean, before the council really gets in effect, we should be gone anyway.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks for being here. In 2021 was the first issue, right?
With the cat.
And the cat died.
But that was a total misunderstanding. I had my dog on a leash and harness, her dad was one with the dog loose.
Right, and someone's cat still died, right? Regardless of how it happened, a cat died in 2021?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, it was my cat.
And then you just put the locks on the door recently, so?
The dog was in the house now.
Oh, okay, okay.
They were running around the house for a good hour before my little dog went underneath the stand and the cat popped up the viper and I think, and she thought the dog was in the...
It was in the house?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it.
And as far as we knew, the dog wasn't in the house.
But in July of last year, there was another incident where your dog did get out and caused injuries to other people.
Actually, I was on the porch with her and I had her tied to a chair leg and she jumped over.
I'm just wondering, why did you wait so long? Is it because you're coming to the council meeting? Why did you wait so long to put extra locks on the doorway?
Because we were hoping to be already moved by now, Mayo.
Okay.
I have a question too.
Yes, ma'am.
The first incident happened in 2021 and it's been over three, four, or five years here. You say you're moving. How long have you known you're moving?
Well, I mean, we didn't know for sure. My sister's in Iraq and we're going to her house to take care of her house because the people that were taking care of it, you know, one of the persons is deceased now. So I'm in the process of moving down there to her house to take care of the place until she comes back.
So Paul's for Thought closed probably three years ago.
Yes.
I know that she had played that clinic took most of those clients and that's right down the street from there.
I didn't even know that, no. I really didn't know that.
I mean, there's a vet clinic, two vet clinics. There's two vet clinics right within a mile of you.
Yeah.
That were taking the clients from Paul's for Thought and were holding spaces for those clients so that their dogs could get vaccinated so that instances like this didn't happen. Have you looked into those vets in the last three years?
Well, we didn't even know that they were taking anybody.
We brought her to a vet a couple times, yeah, but we had to pay for it, which was, I don't know, who was the name?
There's also low-costs. Yep, that's incredibly expensive. There's also low-cost clinics that will travel. So there's a lot of opportunities to have your animals vaccinated.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm just curious as to why.
There's one vet that's close by that I just haven't had good things with because I've had other dogs and stuff. And the person isn't just, I didn't like what happened. And that's why I wasn't bringing my dogs now there, which is Tannenberger. I will not bring my animals to Tannenberger, I just, I've had bad experiences.
Typically, when vets close their practice, they'll send out letters to, you know, dog owners that have had their animals vaccinated.
But we moved from one place to another, ma'am, and we haven't been able to get back there because we don't get transportation to get there, ma'am. Actually, a lot of our stuff is still in the same spot.
But do you see how this is, this issue has become multi-layered? Like not only has this dog bit other dogs, but your dog is not vaccinated.
Yes.
And if another dog bit Daisy and got her sick, you'd probably not be very happy with them. I know that if I was walking my dogs down the street and Daisy attacked my dogs and got them sick, I'd be pretty limited.
Well, and also the cost associated with the pet owner whose dog got attacked.
Yes.
You know, there's costs on that that they're on the hook for. When they were just simply out walking their dog, minding their own business, and out of nowhere comes a dog. And as a responsible pet owner, you have to have your dog under control at all times. Do they skip out? Yeah, sometimes.
But this is...
But there's numerous times, there's four instances of vicious dogs. That's four too many.
Yes. One of the times I actually did have the lock on, but somebody was coming in the door, wasn't watching, and the dog got out behind the back.
It proves that there's too many opportunities for this to have happened and to continue happening. And I'll say to anyone who left Google face that I love dogs more than probably anything. But there's been too many dogs that have been hurt and too many humans that have been hurt.
Daisy never attacked the person, no?
But people have fallen over or been scratched because Daisy has attacked other dogs. And I would definitely break up a fight between my dog and a dog attacking it.
I was the one that actually broke up all the fights because I did it.
But other people were hurt in the meantime.
They fell, they might have fell down or something, yes.
What was your, so if I'm walking by your house and your dog snuck out and attacked my dog, what was your response to the people whose dog was attacked by your dog? We heard what the report said, we wanna hear from you.
Well, I tried apologizing, but then like the neighbors close by, which was one of the incidences, they're allergic, I mean, really rude, you know, and I'm trying to be nice in this, you know, they just got a bad reaction from three of the people, actually.
But taking responsibility, right? Because you're, this is, I don't think this is Daisy's fault, right? This is the fault of the people who are in charge of her because she is...
Yes, because that was...
Right, so I think taking responsibility for our pets is really important and telling people to... Did you tell people that were walking the other side of the street? Did you say that?
No, I never told anybody to walk on the other side of the street, no. No, I've not, because I mean, I can't control them going to the sidewalk.
What did you think your neighbor's reaction would be?
I mean, if I'm trying to be nice, I mean, try to hear me out, at least.
Yeah, that your dog attacked your dog.
Yes, I understand that.
What do you want to happen and what do you think we, what would you do if you were in this seat?
I, I don't know. I mean, just give me a time to get her vaccinated and stuff.
But it's been, it's been three, four years.
Yes. Well, I mean, she had a three-year, she had a three-year process of being, well, she got vaccinated, which was great because we're a positive thought closed down, she got three years before she has to be vaccinated again.
Most vaccines are one year, Ray-Bans is three years.
Three, yeah, okay.
Does she have a tag?
She had, she had her tag, but I, I don't know, it felt, the tag thing is still there, but I mean, the tag somewhere in the house, I think.
So that's the vaccination part. What about the attacking? What do you want to happen out of this meeting and what do you think you would do if you were in this seat?
Well, I mean, I planned on putting one of those invisible barriers through. That was one of the biggest things, but it's just having the money right now because...
You wanted to put invisible fence over? You wanted to put invisible fence in?
Yes, I planned on doing that.
She probably busts right through that.
Are you, how are you able to do that if you couldn't install extra locks on the doors?
I did install extra locks.
I know, but you said you couldn't for a few years because it wasn't your house.
Right, and I wasn't, we weren't constantly staying there. We also stayed in the homeless shelter for a little bit. So we didn't stay there the whole three-year time. Couple times we were just visiting, so I mean, we weren't living there at that time, yeah.
So I think, you know, when you have this many incidents, right, the whole town kind of knows you don't. Then it gets pointed out to us, that's why you're here. And I see a ton of times in the summertime where your dog's on the porch without a leash. And when dogs walk by, you try to muffle onto the dog to hold her on the leash. I see a ton of times where the door that she breaks out of, you know, there's two doors, the storm door and the main door, you just have that open, sometimes in the middle of winter, and the dog just...
The father, the father busts out of it. That's fine, it can be the father, it can be whoever, but the problem is you're not doing... And you got these lying incidences, right? Has the dog ever had a muzzle on it? The dog can't be outside, obviously, without a leash. It can't be in that house without both doors closed. And after all these incidents, none of that has changed. You know what I'm saying?
When I said it hit my house, I can't control whether her father went to the door or not.
It's your dog, though.
Yes, that's why I put extra locks in the storm door.
Well, now you can control it? Because in 2001 you couldn't control it?
I wasn't living there at that time.
2004, well, the dog was there.
Yes, the dog was there, visiting, yes.
When you were at Tim's house?
Yes, ma'am.
Was your dog there with you?
Yes, both dogs.
And both your dogs were there? And if...
We went in and out, there's many other dogs there. I couldn't control them.
Were there, you know, I know people that work there.
Yes.
If I asked them, like, are there any other issues? Were there any issues with your dog at all while you were at...
No.
Okay, it's true.
No, ma'am. You can ask, you can ask the director, Ben.
What, when do you, when do you expect to move?
Hopefully within the next month. I'm hoping within the next month or so because we get, I mean, right now we have issues with disability because he checked it out. Someone stole her pocketbook with the director's express card in it, ma'am. So now she's gonna get all of IDs, so now it's a pain in the neck.
So your barriers to the move? Because I think for the council, it's important to know, like, you know, what is...
I'm the only one that hasn't fixed it up.
What is...
Right now, I mean, I do side jobs.
What is the plan? So there's obviously barriers to making that move, but it's that...
To save enough money.
And it's hard to make a decision when you're saying that you're moving. So if the dog's moving, it won't be a problem for San Almond, but then if you don't end up moving?
Oh, I'm glad, I have to move.
That is tricky for us, you know what I'm saying?
We'll be leaving probably even on the, like, the fourth of next month because it's, you know, it's the first and the third. So once I get that, then four months, right?
So it won't be a problem?
So it won't be a problem if the city voted that the dog, the dog has to leave the city by the fourth?
Say that again?
So if we vote that the dog has to be out of the city by the fourth, that shouldn't be a problem?
Gotcha. No problem.
What if we do? I would add that, um, the dog would also have to maybe have a muzzle on when he's outside.
You can't put a muzzle on.
She won't keep it on.
That's, that's who tries to put muzzles on your dog. She's, like I said.
Her head is.
Pitbulls use the dewclaws, the fingers.
There's a shot anyway, right?
Yes.
Yes, she's always on a leash.
She's never on a leash at all time.
Well.
She's never off her leash.
But it sounds like on the porch she is, though.
Yes, she's over you, or with a leash, with her harness, and so is Cooper.
Yes.
They're both on leashes, everything on the porch. I never, neither one of them, well, at least, you know, neither one of them is bent off the leash on the porch.
Is there a person, is there always a person?
Always, my dad should tell a guy.
Is your dad able to, is your dad able to control the dog because of the dogs?
She listens, she listens to her.
She listens, she listens.
That's popular, and she listens really.
I apologize, guys. The last summer, I've seen the contrary.
Yeah.
I've seen your dog off the leash on that porch. I've seen where you were trying to muckle her around the neck.
Um, yeah.
All the dogs walk by, I've seen it.
Maybe a couple of times, she might have been on the leash.
Well, that's not on the leash all the time. That's not on the leash all the time.
So we, we, like, many of us are dog lovers.
Yes, ma'am.
You gotta be straight with us.
Yep.
Right? Because I don't want to see this dog put down. That would break my heart.
Mine, too.
You have to take responsibility. You need to be straight with us.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, like, don't waste our time or your time.
Yeah, I was reckless, I, I, I admit it.
So you, you can't be, you can't be.
I know, I'm just saying, that's why I've tried to, I've tried to boost up what I do, you know? Because usually, I mean, I, I read her body language, so I know when she's gonna do something now. I mean, I totally read her total body language, and she tightens up or whatever, and she gets alert, I'm right on her now, constantly.
Did you hear what the police officer said was our range of jurisdiction?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, no, none of us want to put it all down.
Right, I understand.
So it's like pretty serious consequences?
I mean, and between the time limit that we, that we, that she said or whatever, if anything happens, I mean, if, if putting her down is what has to be done, I, there's nothing I can do about it.
So you're saying that she should be in Florida by our next state council today?
Hopefully. I'm pretty positive, she's pretty positive, I'm pretty positive, ma'am.
I, I think, I think the board is gonna want your dog out of the city.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
And if you're moving on the fourth, that's, that's what it's gotta be.
Yes, sir.
Or else I think the council is gonna direct the police and the animal patrol officer to get you out.
Yes.
At the very least, to get out of the city.
And, and rehoming your dog is gonna be tough because it's got a long history of bites. It's not vaccinated. So I really, I mean, I really encourage you to take this very seriously.
Yes, sir.
Okay, why don't we give you guys a break for a second? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Anybody at all? Yes, please stand up, name of your name.
I'm David McWilliams. I used to be your animal patrol officer for thirty-eight years. Don, he knows me well, and some of the members on the council. By having a vicious dog complaint, you're gonna make a decision within a certain amount of time. The dog had bitten somebody, broken the skin, it's classified under the Vicious Dog Act. If the dog is not licensed and has been licensed for many years, then what you're doing is not enforcing the licensing of dogs in the city of St. Almond. Required by law, Title twenty says that every year that the city or town has to license and do a dog census in the city or town that you live in. If you're gonna give this gentleman, I don't know him, I, I don't know him at all. If you're gonna prolong the time that he's gonna be able to get the dog out of the town or the city, basically what you're doing.
Thank you for making.
The liability is still gonna go on the city.
Gotcha.
Because I've had cases in Georgia where a woman got bit on the side of the head and took off her ear, and that was over a million dollars. And that was American Stipulation Care, you know, uh, back about thirty years ago. Jim Lovey had a pit bull attack his colleague, and that dog was moved to another town. Ended up, I got hired because of the fact that it came from the city and went to the town. I think if, if you're gonna take and give him till the fourth, my opinion, as animal patrol for thirty-eight years, not sure putting your city in liability.
Thank you for those comments. Anybody else? Okay, no further comments. Is there any further questions from my council to, uh, the dog owners?
Would, do you have the ability to get your dog vaccinated? Do you have the, and if, and if you don't, you can just say so, like.
Uh, right now, no, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for being on.
We're waiting for a director's express card to get it.
Thank you for being honest about that. Um, okay.
Is there a place where we.
There's a free, uh, maybe, maybe a free child.
Where they can actually get to get her vaccinated?
Do you have smartphones?
Yes, ma'am.
He does, I do not.
Just do a quick search, low-cost vaccination clinic, Franklin County.
Okay.
All right, I didn't, I didn't know if they had low-cost ones, but we had to go to a vet.
You're on the same street as a vet.
Right. See, I'm not originally from Vermont, so.
Where would I?
I'm from Massachusetts, so.
Where would I be?
Why don't you, why don't you let us, uh, discuss it, um, and, um, why don't you folks take your seats, uh, back in the audience? And the council will have some discussion on what direction we wanna go in. And Lindsay, you seem very knowledgeable on this. What are your thoughts?
Thanks, Tim. Um, I agree with, was it Dave?
David Williams?
David Williams.
Yep.
About how many chances you can give someone. Um, I agree it's gonna take a lot to get the dog rehomed. It's a tough call. I, I would be leaning toward rehoming because obviously, four years of constant, you know, tickets, reminders, a license, a dog to be licensed costs twelve dollars, you know? And what got me is that there was no effort made to vaccinate your dog. And Paws For Thought closed at least three years ago, and they gave about a year's notice that they were closing. And there's been no effort to do the right thing and to, at the bare minimum, vaccinate against rabies, the bare minimum. And that shows me that there's been a lot of chances given. So personally, I would push toward rehoming. The part about moving to Florida in a month kinda makes me think that we might go through all this in talking to rescues and then they're gone, but I don't know. It sounds like there's not super solid plans to make those moves. But I do think by the next meeting, if something big doesn't happen, we should look to rehome.
Reed?
Um, I, I agree a thousand percent with you, Lindsay. Um, the other thing I might add is that when you get a dog, any pet, you have to realize there's, there's costs associated with that. It's not just, oh, what a cute little dog. Now, you have to have neutered, spayed, uh, shots, upkeep, uh, grooming if they're that kind of animal. Um, it, it takes a little bit of planning when you adopt a dog, like children. You don't just have a child and then that's the end of it. I mean, there's, there is cost associated with everything. And it isn't fair to put people at risk because of your lack of accountability and a lack of, of responsibility for your pet. And I have a dog, I think probably all that one, and, and, yeah, there are costs associated with them. And they're not always easy to meet those costs, but it's the obligation that you have in being a pet owner. And, um, so I, I'm, I, I like the idea of giving you a little bit of le, of leave time with the, you know, till the fourth of next month. But on the other hand, you haven't really convinced me that you're going to be moving. I mean, all these other things, you know, you always had a, well, you know, we, we couldn't do this, but the vet closed, but you always had kind of an excuse to be blunt about it. Um, so what would be the difference, you know? You say you're gonna move? I don't know.
Can I mention one little thing, ma'am?
Sure.
Just real quick.
Yep.
Um, nothing to, with the cost of taking care of the dog, like I said, we brought it to Bev's and stuff. Um, well, Daisy has cancer in her foot and stuff, and we've been paying for that also, paying for the medications for that. I mean, it's, it's been costly, you know, and also going to Bev's alone is, is really expensive.
I know.
And, I mean, they're great doctors there, I mean, great vets, um, high-tech vets, from what I see, and, uh, awesome people.
Would she, would Bev see your dog unvaccinated?
Huh?
Would, would, will they see dogs at the emergency vet hospital that are not vaccinated?
They, they know that she's not.
Yes.
Oh, they don't?
But, but, I mean, she did have her rabies up until now. I mean, it, it's out now. I mean, it, for her rabies, which is three years, you know?
Okay, let's, uh, why don't we move down the line here, Jack?
All right, um, I go by your house all the time.
Yes, sir.
I know there's not, you don't control that dog properly. It, it, you don't control that dog properly. That's why there's so many incidences. And you talk about, um, the cost, um, of your dog. You can look at the last instance on here. Your dog got out of the house. Attacked a dog named Oakley. Oakley had puncture bites in its neck. Smith's friend started punching at the dog.
At Oakley?
At Oakley. And they backed in the street to get away, almost hit by a car. Oakley received a puncture wound to the neck.
All right, let's talk, we're talking about this also right now.
Okay.
Why don't you point that out to us?
So I'm pointing it to you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, this year? I mean, that's not showing like a lot of control of the dog, so what's your recommendation? I think the dog is gonna be rehomed, and, you know, I initially said the fourth when they're moving, but I'm not sure if they're gonna move.
I swear on, like, I, I can't, to be honest with you, I can't even stand being in St. Almond. I really can't. So, yes, I swear on, I am moving. I need to get out of there.
Okay, yes, ma'am, let's, uh, let's discuss it some more, guys, here.
I, I think that the dog has to be out of the city. I mean, May fifth seems like a long time, and I appreciate Dave's perspective that we are liable for the time that we allow the dog. I, I mean, I'm your lawyer. Are we, are we liable if we say the dog that we know has attacked other animals can stay another month? And something happens and someone come back on us?
Let me just put it this way.
I'm asking you.
If I were the lawyer on the dog, um, the person who got hurt, my gun sights would be at your forehead.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Um, so I just, I don't, I want to believe that the, the people who own the dog are going to do better, but I don't, I'm just not sure. I think at the very least, um, I don't know. I'm not really, the dog has to get vaccinated and has to be licensed. Um, and, you know, you know, maybe those are costs that we can, like, we can help with. Like, I understand that finances are, are tricky when you do own a dog. And sometimes when you're down on your luck, like, it's hard, right? So the dog, you know.
Especially with the issues with her cancer and the.
Absolutely, and, um,
I mean, I can.
So I, I would be willing to, like, see if we could help with that piece of the puzzle as far as vaccinations and licensing. Um, and I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I'm on the fence around letting, giving them, you know, the month with the dog.
Eric?
I've been a pet owner for twenty-five years, at least. I mean, my parents had before then, but I've owned a dog consistently for twenty-five years. And I have one instance where my dog's got out of it right after we got them, and she ran in the middle of the road terrified, stopped in the middle of the road, picked her up and brought her back inside. I have, I'm a strong believer that animals act the way they're taught in their nature. Their nature is, yes, they're animals, um, but we have a huge influence on dogs. And I know this dog came from a fighting background, which is definitely a factor to consider. It's also a factor to consider when you're adopting a dog, can I handle a dog that came from a fighting background? And in the situation with as many cases, I'm worried you can't. Um, my other point would be that Florida law says you have to have your dogs vaccinated. So irrelevant if you're gonna be leaving soon and then get vaccinated, you have to get vaccinated, period.
Right.
Because if you go there, they're gonna say the same thing we are, you have to have your dog vaccinated. Um, I, I understand vaccines cost money, I understand cancer costs. I honestly don't believe that Bev's didn't suggest at any point that you should get your dog vaccinated again. I, I know those doctors down there, they're good doctors, and they look at the entire charts. Um, so all in all, my opinion is I'm more leaning towards rehousing because of the liabilities. Also, I think there's better homes out there that can handle a dog that's in recovery from a fighting situation. Um, and I don't think the dog's lost. I think they have an opportunity to have a good home to help retrain them. Um, whether or not we can find that home properly is a big thing, but I'm leaning towards rehousing.
Does staff have any decisions to hear?
We can vaccinate this dog easily within the resources that we have and cover it. May fifth's right around the corner, and if we protect the public health by getting the dog vaccinated and confiscate the dog on May fifth, if it's still here, that, that's a possible path forward.
And, can I just add, add like an and? If there is the slightest incident between now and May fifth, it's a deal breaker. It would be a deal breaker for her.
I was looking, you know, that, that's still. You know, we're not set up to have this dog, you know, so if we confiscate it, what this looks like is we pick up the boarding tag, we, we, we get on the horn and try to find someplace that'll take it, and then we board it until, until we find a home, right? So we don't, we're not, you know.
We're not in that business.
We're not in that business. So we can confiscate and we can work to rehome, but not indefinitely. We can't keep, we can't board that dog for months on end while we work to find a home.
Another humane society still would take them in, but rescues are a lot of things.
So, so, just so I get understood, so we're gonna ask the dog owners to make a vet appointment. We'll swing for the vaccinations. And on May fifth, if the dog's still in the city,
we're gonna take the dog.
We're gonna take the dog.
And if anything happens between now and May fifth?
We're taking the dog.
We're taking the dog with no, there would be no question?
Including the dog being off, breaking the leash law? Even if there's no attack?
And that means you have to make the appointment?
That's a violation of the ordinance anyway, so.
You have to make the appointment, like tomorrow morning.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on, we're not, we're, nothing's on the passus don't here yet.
So.
So, does somebody wanna put together, try and put together something, Judy?
Okay. Guys, ready? I make a motion to, um, leave the dog, allow the dog to remain in the city until May fourth. Has to be out of the city by May fifth. If the dog is still in the city, and we will check on May fifth, the dog is confiscated. If there's any, this is gonna go a long one, sorry. If there's any incident between now and that time with anyone, any complaint about the dog, the dog is automatically confiscated. Um, you, the owners will make a vaccination appointment.
Is there a certain place you need to make that?
Um, doc, um, will make a vaccination appointment at a local vet. Um, and the city will cover those costs and, and the licensing.
We need one time for that.
Within, um, one week, within, by Friday. I'd like an appointment made by Friday. Because they might be busy, but by Friday. Want me to list a vet? Pick one?
Is it, uh, Lindsay, in your experience, uh, is it possible to have a vaccination done within seventy-two hours or forty-eight hours?
Appointments are hard to come by sometimes. Yeah, I would say appointment should be made within seventy-two hours or by Friday, but I'd give them maybe a couple of weeks. I can get, look into that and come back, and that's helpful.
But the appointment would need to be made and, um.
They can't find it tomorrow, for Christ's sake. I'll call around. They can, twenty-four hours, and, you know.
She ain't playing bets right down the road.
Dr. Gunther, right next to you.
Really? I didn't know those were that close. Uh, when I knew about close to Tannenberger, there's my contact.
Uh, okay, so do we have, like, a motion, fashion motion out of that?
It was a long motion.
Just the, the timeframe is twenty-four hours, seventy-two hours?
Twenty-four hours to make an appointment.
All right, why don't you read it back to us, just so we know we've got it. All right, why don't you read it back to us, just so we know we've got it?
Um, so, motion to, uh, to dog remain in the city until May 5th. Now, if the dog is still in the city, the dog will be confiscated by then. Um, if there's any incident between now and that time, or any complaint between now and that time, dog will automatically be confiscated. The owners will make a vaccination appointment at a local vet, and the city will cover the costs and animal licensing costs. The appointment should be made within 72?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours. Will, will it be made?
Um, and, yep, and we're, we'll, we'll check.
And the definition of an incident is any violation of the current ordinance?
Off-leash.
Okay, so we have a motion by Trudy. Is there a second?
A second.
So, a motion by Trudy Coffey, a second by, uh, Eric. Uh, is there any further discussion, uh, of the council? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
I abstain.
Let the record reflect, uh, that there is one question in five votes in the paper of the motion.
Is there somebody I can verify that I need to find?
What?
Oh, just call it, no.
Okay. Call the city manager.
Give me your mail.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll lock that link, I'll give you the number in the back.
You're gonna need to call me to verify, so... President, we're right on time.
Okay. Cause we have one more, so we're...
Out of the past, my friend, it was ever changed.
Okay, sorry about that, sorry. All right, we'll give Jim, uh, Trudy a second, and then we'll move on to, uh, another chip. Scenario. I can't, I can't see her. Chip, why don't you go ahead and begin?
Yeah, all right. Reed, you can come up.
Thanks very much. Um, we've been talking a lot about the combined sewer overflow, uh, and the order that we're under from the state to mitigate the overflow that occurred during storm events. So, there are a few, uh, boxes we'd like to check tonight. One is to, um, have the city council get an update on our amended long-term control plan. The, uh, long-term control plan was something we developed a while ago, back when our order from the state was renewed. And it basically, it's always listed, uh, an obligation to monitor rain events, monitor when we have overflows, how much they're overflowing, um, affirm any other minimum control measures that were ordered to do any order, and also to accomplish, uh, certain projects. We've talked about separation, we've talked about storage. Uh, the big change in the long-term control plan, I'm just gonna go straight to it, was, you might remember, we talked about an ambitious separation project. We had to separate much of the storm water that comes down Lake Street and goes down Federal Street and cross railroad land. And it just turned out that, um, that tactic wasn't going to work based on issues with the railroad and liabilities. So, we pivoted to the, instead of separation, to do storage of half a million gallons at Horton Park. And in doing that, we discovered it's probably actually the most elegant solution anyway. But our long-term control plan had the Federal Street separation project in it. So, as you'll see in, in the handout that you were given, we basically updated it so that short-term, we can show some of the things we've done. We can show that we did the Stevan Street separation project last year, but also that now we are looking at a below-ground, offline storage CSO tank. It's in final design, and that's the Horton Street project. And that the Federal Street project is no longer in the plan. The, um, state has said they would like us to show these changes to the city council and to have you, uh, reapprove the amended long-term control plan. Uh, you actually approved the original one, that from a few years ago.
Can you refresh, uh, our memory on the Hungerford store water project?
There is a project by which we would actually treat some of the storm water in the trunk line that goes north out of the city. Uh, collects a bunch of storm water in the city. It's actually the old sewer trunk line that used to go to the plant before we built the new one. Now it's storm water. And it act, it outfalls right outside the, the water treatment plant on Moose Drive. And the idea is to take that and actually acquire some land that the Hungerford family owns and treat it way out there in the town. But the storm water that's collected there is from the city, so it would count as storm water treatment. At the same time, we would be able to separate some areas in the city around, uh, Murray Drive, Edward and Russell Streets, and, uh, send that newly separated storm water to the Hungerford treatment as well. So, that would be a separation project, and probably one of the projects we would look at after we're done would be Horton Park Storage Project.
Okay. Any questions on very chip?
The overflow event summaries here, those are like totally the city. And that's not just what we would just be going to the overflow of the project, right? This is like two a year for most years, over 500,000 gallons.
Do you have any?
I have to look. Well, that's, uh...
3.2.
Yeah.
3.2, Chip?
Right.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, it's table still...
Yes, table 3.2.
Yeah.
Or, I'm sorry, table 3.1, under 3.2 overflow occurs.
That's it, right there. Right here?
Yeah, those two. So, the only year we didn't was 2022, but given the events last year, Barry, and then the increases we've seen here for three, over for 2023, we're just fortunate 2024 didn't have any. But what are we anticipating management for that excess if we start doing that to those numbers?
Total volume of gallons. Uh, this is where, this is the data that provide its effect, that when you look at most of these events, and many of them, a few of them are over a million gallons, a few of them are over half a million gallons, but most of them are under half a million gallons. And this was the source of that data. We showed that building the storage would reduce the vast majority of these overflow pets.
But this is probably totally the whole city, so this is what this already is bypassing that already.
Oh, so, yeah, the city only has one overflow point.
Yeah.
It's right there. So, anytime there's an overflow, it's coming from right there. Yeah, that's, and that's why we located the storage there, because it will, it will intercept all of those overflows. There are, there are other communities in Vermont that have multiple CSOs. We only have one CSO because it only overflows in that one location. Right? They're like, Rutland has various different overflow locations that they have to deal with.
My other question is, I know we have those systems that have the alerts on, the alarms, and they say call 911 if you see it going off, or call dispatch if you see it going off. A couple of weeks ago, someone had one, they kept complaining about it not going off down the road from them, and they said it was like eight hours going off. Are those remotely calling too, or is it just relying on civilians to check on them?
I saw that on Facebook, and I'm, I'm not sure that was one of ours.
Gotcha.
That might have been someone's private over, uh, water detection system.
But I was just wondering, yeah. And I don't know if that felt too...
Part of the law, for sure. Yeah. So, typically, those are when we have a sewer pump house that's not working. It's not an overflow.
That's just, what is it?
It's when one of our pump houses stops working, that's, that alarm will go off, cause we want this thing working. So, sort of a different situation.
Yep.
Any further questions, uh, for Chip on the public hearing, combined sewer overflow control plan?
Are we still planning doing anything, uh, more at Gaia Circle?
Yeah, that would, that would be a storm water project.
Okay, storm water.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
So, that'll, that would be a storm water utility project.
That's what I was gonna say, that's why, sorry about that.
Any further discussion, uh, with the council on this? Chip, thank you very much. Um, okay, so now we will move on. Do we need a?
Next up.
Oh, we need a, we need a, uh, dis- discussion vote, right?
Yeah, to approve the amended.
Motion?
A motion that we accept the long-term control plan is presented.
Okay.
Motion made by Eric, seconded by Trudy. Any further discussion with the council? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Uh, all those opposed, nay? Let the record reflect 6-0 in favor. Thank you very much.
We have an Allen and Cotton Park CSO.
Okay, so, um, public hearing for Horton Park CSO, finding of no significant impact.
I'm trying to share the PowerPoints, and Reed here from Aldra Chaneli is gonna lead us through. Here we go.
Hello, council, um, my name's Reed Winter with Aldra Chaneli, the design consulting engineer for Horton Park. Um, this is the projects I think you're all familiar with. I've heard you go quick, but, um, the 500,000 gallon combined sewer overflow, low-ground storage tank, um, that's along with new trash screening, sewage pump station, um, sewer, sewer piping, um, and new outfall. Um, so, setting back, you know, when we do these projects, the purpose, uh, is to comply with the National Environmental Policy Act, and when you use the state water funding, you go through, um, this process.
So, basically, we need to do an environmental assessment, and we've received our finding of no significant impact, so we have to hold the hearings now.
Yeah.
Yes, as Chip just mentioned, we submitted several, a long time ago now, um, environmental report where it goes through many different criteria, which we'll see on the next page. Um, and then someone from the state reviews it and evaluates it, and then for a finding of no significant impact, and then after this, the state will then issue the environmental review determination. Um, so, the environmental report, and these are the items that are reviewed for the project of things that, um, improve the area or, um, don't improve it, and there aren't any issues, um, that fall under this criteria. And the biggest improvement from this project is that it reduces combined sewer overflow.
All the other impacts we're supposed to look at diminish and will have no negative impact on environmental concerns.
Um, so, the two affected, um, resources are installing a new overflow outfall. There's an existing one already there, um, but unfortunately, because of elevation issues, we weren't able to reuse it, so there will be a new outfall in case of the rare occurrences that over 500,000 gallons of CSO, um, are in the tank and the tank overfills. Um, and then also, the project is within the river corridor of Stevens Brook there. Um, as just mentioned, installing new outfall, um, unfortunately, there's already one there. We have to put a new one, uh, and, um, it'll be very similar to the one that's already there. The project is within River Corridor. Um, all of the infrastructure is below ground, so there won't actually be any impacts to the River Corridor itself. And lastly, the benefits of the project, as you know, is all about limiting combined sewer overflow going to Stevens Brook, which then also leads to the bay and to drink, public drinking water supplies as well. Questions, comments?
So, we've complied with NIPA, and this is our environmental assessment meeting?
Yeah, this is our required public hearing for any public comment. There's no other action required for the city council.
And nothing's changed since your last presentation to us regarding this project?
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed on that?
There have been some questions from neighborhood stakeholders about what will be on the surface of the affected part of Horton Park, and we're getting some clarifying information on that. The manholes and the vents way, way back on the, um, southern end of the, uh...
The Lee Tree side?
The lower, the Lower Weldon Street side.
Oh, Lower Weldon Street, right.
Will we be able to bring the trees back in, or is it gonna be interfering?
Um, boy, but I think, we talked about the trees. We talked about, we can plant trees on top of it, maybe.
We could plant some trees. I think there was a, just, I think around the new basketball court, but I think there was the opinion of not putting trees around the basketball court.
Gotcha. And blocking that.
Yeah, that's...
I just like that lines it divided apart from the road.
And there's nothing that interferes with the safety of the improvement of the park, right?
No, uh, mostly because this is a very underutilized part of the park. So, we talked about how the construction will get close to the southern end zone for steelers, so we might have to relocate steelers later this summer. We're not quite sure, we're gonna work that out. When the project is done, it will be back to just affecting what's above, what's above the tanks. And there are some concerns about steelers, if they used to venture south, it's part of practice and run around.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna have some answers for them on what it's gonna look like so that they can plant accordingly. But anything that's there is gonna be plain to see, so that kids don't run into it.
Anyone in the public wanna speak to this issue? Anybody in the audience? Any more, uh, council discussion on it? All we have is a public hearing, so, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, speaking of CSO project at Horton Park, uh, item number 10, consider the loan amendment for Horton Park CSO project.
This is the, uh, what this really is, it's, it's taking out the debt to the bonds that the voters who just remarked, we're gonna go through the SRF program to, to, to take on that debt, so we're gonna follow their loan amendment form. And it's in your package.
Is this it?
That's it. It's the same loan application that we do for all of the SRS projects.
You need a motion, right?
Uh, yes, to approve the loan amendment.
Ready for it?
Go.
I need the motion to approve the loan amendment for Horton Park CSO project.
Motion made by Trudy, seconded by Eric. Uh, any further discussion from the council? No further discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Let the record reflect 6-0. Thanks, Reed.
I really appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, the public update, whether we wanna hear it or not, on Federal Street multimodal connector.
Another box to check. As you know, we, we restarted the design process when we got the raised grants. Think we might actually be able to build the project finally, and D-Trans would like us to just do a reminder of the concept and the preliminary plans for the project. And so, I'm just gonna run through, and then be able to navigate around this PDF to do it. So, I'm gonna start down at the south end. I'm gonna start where the St. Albans State Highway meets, uh, South Main Street. The plan is here to install a traffic signal, which is going to help with traffic management. It's going to allow trucks and other traffic that want to turn left to do so. Uh, and is actually gonna take some of the pressure off of the Upper Weldon Street truck traffic, because their GPSs will now start telling them that this is more of a viable intersection. It's also gonna provide a pedestrian phase for the kids and other people who are walking down South Main Street, but specifically those kids who walk to State Tech. Another reason why we're installing the light is because to take the pressure off of Mason Street, we are proposing a new city street that keeps going straight from the St. Albans State Highway, travels through, uh, these lots, most of which the city already owns, hangs a right turn, and then meets at Mason Street in Lemna Drive. There will be some storm water treatment in this area. It's not gonna be exactly where you see this pond. It's actually gonna be on this parcel that the city already owns. But what we'll have here is we'll have a, uh, Mason Street will now stop and will honor the primacy of this new north-south corridor that the, the new street will be able to travel onto Lemna. Lemna will be able to travel onto the new street. On Lemna Drive, we're going to add a sidewalk, which will help, uh, there are a lot of, uh, there are a few pedestrian... Well, there, there are a few locations on Lemna Drive that pedestrians might walk to, like the, uh, like the food shelf. So, we're gonna add a sidewalk to Lemna Drive, and then we're gonna get to what might be the city's first roundabout. And let me talk to you about why we're proposing this. Now, you remember that I said that if, if the feds are funding this corridor, we've got to treat it like a north-south corridor? And right now, Lemna Drive and Allen Street stop at Lower Weldon. And that's sort of non-intuitive if we're trying to create this new corridor, that people are already using this north-south corridor. We tried to do a stop on Lower Weldon Street, but it's too close to the railroad signs. There are five different tracks with a gate on either side. So, even though there's only one main line and the rest of the tracks are used rarely, the gates are on either side. And the stop sign here on the western end would just be too close to the tracks. Whereas a roundabout will allow for more... Whereas a roundabout will allow for more free-flowing traffic. And also, we can design it so that there's a little escape here, if someone stops here and they see the railroad gate come down, they could quickly escape their car onto this apron and get out of the way.
The belly trucks can make their turn?
Right, the belly trucks can make their turn, we've done the calculation for our fire trucks coming out of the fire station and going around, heading down Lower Weldon, Lemna Drive, we've calculated that. This does require taking or acquiring some of the railroad land in this corner you might see, and we're talking to them about that right now.
Is there a way for southbound Allen Street to bypass cars waiting for trains going by, like there is on Lake Street?
So in a roundabout, what we're hoping is that people understand that, once you enter that roundabout, you got to go around and get out, so that they won't just clog up the roundabout waiting.
Well, I'm saying there's a train going across, right?
Yep.
And Allen Streets, people are coming down Allen Street, going south. And they're, now they're right where your signifier is, there's cars there. How are the people from Allen Street gonna, who are, who want to continue on and not go down Weldon Street, negotiate that? Is there like two lanes, one for the people going down Weldon Street, and one for the people that want to proceed through the roundabout?
Well, I'll ask the engineers about that.
Okay.
So you're, Tim, you're worried that if, that if traffic starts backing up here, that there, people are going to enter the roundabout and just kind of wait, you're worried about that?
Yes, yes, and Allen Street not being able to continue on.
Yeah, yeah, because if there's a car waiting here, the traffic from Allen Street will not be able to... Yeah, I'll ask the engineers about that.
And not to, so the, when people, if we do this, and people say like, why are we putting a roundabout? And it's around the traffic flow, that's the main goal.
Because it's really, it's really hard to put a stop sign at the western end of Lower Weldon. What we've got to do is try and, we have to do our best, take our best shot at allowing north-south traffic from Lemna to go onto Allen and back and forth without having to stop. Because they're supposed to be the dominant phase now, because it's a north-south corridor. So that's why this has been proposed. But we'll take these comments back.
Do you think that, do you think that the majority of the traffic coming, traveling north using this, is, what is it going to be, truck traffic?
It's going to be a mix. What I think might be possible is, if any trucks are coming off of, coming off of 89 for the co-op, although I think most of them come from the east and the north. They would get off the St. Albans State Access Highway, they would go on the new city street, Lemna Drive, Allen Street, and then straight across Lake Street down Central. So, yeah, we're ready for residential traffic and cars, but also truck traffic to...
Car traffic is gonna, if they need to get to the north half of the city, they're going to just get, they're just going to get off on the next exit. You know, so usually people coming off from the interstate are wanting to come into the city for some reason. But this could be a school escape, I guess, but the same question I had for cars traveling north on Allen Street, I would have the same question for cars traveling south, coming from the north, traveling south of Allen Street, the same question I'd have people on Lemna Drive traveling north. Is there an escape route for them to continue on while cars are waiting to get down Weldon Street, and they're backed up with a train there? They would have to...
I understand not putting stop signs, and this is tying into that. What about the lights, and I've seen lights tied into railroad systems. So when the railroad's down, basically, she turns a red for that way and keeps it green for the other way, because there's no point in stopping traffic.
You're right, that's the gold standard. That would solve a lot of the problems if we could make it happen, if we could coordinate with the railroad. But the last time we tried this option at Lake Street, we ended up with a four-way stop, because the system's talking to each other, and then the necessity of actually having another red light that keeps people from crossing the tracks, or it just, it became a very, very much more expensive option.
Well, my only thought is, Weldon Street down, I don't, I imagine for seeing, I already see it now, it's not as busy as Allen and Lemna.
Right.
So if that most of the time is red being triggered by sensors, then you're not dealing with a... I mean, I like the roundabout idea, I mean, just as far as keeping your green going this way unless there's traffic.
There could be another lane here, and another lane here. That would, that would take care of everything that we worry about on Lake Street. I travel this a lot.
Yep.
But everything, my problems that I have with Lake Street kind of don't happen anymore, because you've got three lanes sitting there, right? Except for Catherine trying to, trying to continue on when you've got a car, Catherine and Lake trying to move down, go down Lake when there's a train there.
Right.
So, but that's the, that's the problem that presents us here, there's nowhere for these guys to keep going if there's cars backed up here, just like there's no place for these people to keep going if there's cars backed up here waiting for a train. So there's an extra little bit of a lane here, a little buffer lane there on each one of those sides, that might help out.
And most people coming down Weldon, if they see traffic stopping, they take it from, if the train's there, they go down to Lake or the other side, so.
What about, so not only is the food shelf on Lemna, but Blue and Mines is too.
Yes.
And I, are there going to be like those lights for the crosswalks like we have out here? I just worry about parents picking up their kids, trying to cross the street, everything's crazy, and that, the crosswalks are, well, this one here going, where is it?
Yeah, so if you're coming down Lemna, we would have you cross here and then go around.
Why would they cross the street, why would they cross the street to pick up their kids?
Just if they're walking.
Oh, if they're walking?
Yeah.
Oh, there's like food shelves on the same side?
There's the food shelf and there's Blue and Mines, I just, I'm at, a lot of walking.
There's a lot of other things in there, more than that.
I just mean like, there wasn't walking.
Well, but that's where the walkers are going to be talking a lot about.
The tattoo parlor.
There's still a lot of walking, and a new traffic circle makes me nervous if there's kids and people, and people carrying bags from the food shelf.
This light is not bad, and I know the light dish would need trees, the state doesn't want a lot of them, because people get too used to them, but we don't need any of them.
They relax that, yeah. But they're still really expensive, for a gram. So Lindsay, one of the things they've done is they've tried to get the crosswalks as far away as from the roundabout as possible.
I feel like people are still going to like run across there, but there's not...
Yeah, well, yeah, we can't plan for human nature, we can try to control it. Well, I'll ask about places where they recommend putting in flashing lights.
The two roundabouts they proposed for Outbyville exit, actually have them closer, not too much closer, but closer than that to the roundabout.
Yeah, but I think we have more, we have the ability to also make it a much narrower crossing up here on Lower Weldon than if they cross...
You have a nine-foot stop at two.
Plus, there's the huge curb cut for the fire trucks.
Oh, that's true.
For as long as they're going to be there.
Right, good point.
I like this, and the train doesn't, I mean, Tim, tell me if I'm wrong, because you said you drive there a lot, I don't think the train goes through there that often.
Yeah, I, yeah, I say at least two times a day, sometimes it's a very wrong time of day.
By, because we normally have a freight, you have the two woodcars, and then you've got the amtrider back, so it's probably at least...
They don't sit there as long as the train does on northbound, I'll tell you that much.
Well, the three times those lights have broken down in our city in the last couple of years is a lot right there, so.
Any thoughts on it, what are we looking at?
We need to have our right-of-way by September of next year, so we're really going to have... We have a lot ahead of us to make this happen, I'm thinking construction in 2028 perhaps, maybe 2027. If I keep going down, if I keep going, if we keep going down the project, we're going to widen Allen Street a little bit. I think we're going to repave it, and here's another major change. What we've proposed is to really realign the intersection of Stebbins, Market, and Catherine, and Allen. Have Allen go right onto Catherine Street, and have Stebbins and Market Street stop. This would require us to acquire the building for Maple Run. And so, we've put this in the plan for now to see if this is possible. The good thing is that if that ends up not being able to happen, we would actually kind of just keep the intersection the way it is now, and just live with it. But we're hoping that we can make this work.
I feel like there's still room to cut a little bit more than it is already, but even if we can't get those buildings.
Yeah, we might make some changes to make it better.
I know a person who got a ticket for not putting the directional light on to go from Catherine Street onto Allen Street. I know a person who got a ticket for that.
Recently?
No, not recently.
I was going to say.
In the last couple of years.
This was in this old T and H?
No, no, no. No, but I do know a person who got a ticket for that.
Yeah, I can, yeah, like, you're supposed to do a right, and then you're supposed to do a left, yeah. It would be, see, right, it would be good to make this more of a little straight-on. So I'm going to skip over to the other side, because as you know, we've already done the middle part of the project. And we're going to pick it back up at Kingman Street, and now we're on Federal Street, which is the name of the actual project. We're going to do our last little bit of streetscaping, and that's along Nellie's on Federal. We're going to do the brick and the nice little streetlights, and that'll be the last downtown streetlights that we install. What we're going to do down the rest of Federal Street is make sure we have a sidewalk on the west side, but then add an eight-foot shared-use path on the east side. And we're going to continue this down.
I saw someone cross, I could use that yesterday.
Yeah, we're going to, actually, what this isn't showing is that there will be a new, well, we were thinking of putting a crosswalk at the Co-op store, which doesn't exist anymore, but Federal Street still does need a couple of crosswalks, and we'll probably still put that in.
I don't need to backtrack for a sec, I know we touched on the left side and the right side, except it's finished, but you said it's a, it's a north-south corridor, and we still have stop signs at Federal and Lake. We're just leaving those, right? Let's not change it.
That's because now what you've got is an actual name-state route crossing our north-south corridor.
That's us on there, thank you.
Yeah, Lake Street kind of trumps our Federal Street corridor.
Gotcha, thanks.
You know, we've talked to GMP, they're going to have to move some poles, we're going to have to take out some trees. We'll see if we can replace as many trees as we want, but there's a lot of desire to bring the multi-use, sort of the bike head aspect of the rail trail into downtown, and that's why we're putting this eight-foot path on Federal Street. We will then widen Federal Street a little bit for the traffic light, which has already been installed. We will see if we can get to this corner from Gloria Brown on the corner to make this a better turning radius here. And then, the corridor will now go up Lower Newton, and we're going to widen Lower Newton a little bit at the mouth to Main Street, and the traffic light there. So here's what's going to happen with the traffic light, well, actually, let me backtrack. The Fonda Project allowed us to build this traffic light early, which was great. I mean, we kind of had to do that to manage what's going to happen with all the workforce and senior housing on the Fonda property. This, this traffic light will be activated later this year, once we're able to put in this striping. The left turn lane, let me, let me zoom in.
And is that light going to talk to the light on Main Street?
It can, but its sensors are going to sense if there's, right now, the way it's going to operate is that the sensors from this light are going to look all the way up Lower Newton, and if it's backing up, it's going to let them go. But there is a radio connection being built in, so that if ever it has to be reprogrammed to talk directly to the main and Newton signal, then it will. But with the radar detector technology that we have at our fingertips right now, it can actually sense all the way up to block.
That's great.
This light, what we're going to do this year with the Fonda Project is we're going to replace the signals and keep the span, the cable. Replacing those signals will mean that this signal will stop shorting out and going to flash, as it has been, as it's late. When the Federal Street project comes through, it's going to reuse those signals, but it's going to put in the mast arms, and it's going to get rid of the cable over the street. And then that'll be the end of the Federal Street project.
Good.
I also included a reevaluation of our environmental assessment, we have to do that for Federal Street, just like we had to do for the Houghton Park CSO. Basically, it's a bunch of, a bunch of comments on various different environmental concerns, and then saying that this project will have a de minimis impact, or might have to mitigate things such as making sure we don't cut down trees and kill some northern long-eared bats, and things like that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Chip.
You're welcome.
Want to stay there and talk about item number 12, which is the public hearing for the new city street.
Yeah, we built the street along Fonda a long time ago, but we do have to go through the official process of declaring it as a public highway, and so that's what we've brought before you. So we have a, we have to do a hearing when we open a new public highway, and then there's a certification form that the city council can consider. I'm not proposing a new name yet, but we will have to eventually name the street. We have some really creative ideas, such as Federal Streets or Federal Street Extension. It broke my heart, but E911 will not allow us to call it Fonda Lane, because there's already a Fonda Place out at the bay.
I was hoping that would be a long...
Off of Fonda Shore, there's a road called Fonda Place, and they won't let you have, because St. Albans shares a name and a zip code, they won't let us have a street with the same name anymore, even though there are a couple.
I mean, I was in the MTA for 10 years, Federal Street makes sense, because then the numbers keep going. You're just like, that's what happened, learning a new road.
Right, we might end up proposing Federal Street Extension, because that section wouldn't be Class 2, whereas Federal Street proper is Class 2, that would have to be Class 3, so we might give it a slightly different name.
It'll be easy to make you memorize all the roads, trust me, so.
But if folks have any ideas, maybe we can bring this back up and name it next month.
Let's do a contest, let's do a native contest, just get it, just get it.
We'd end up with Bodie McLookface.
For sure, it's a fake street.
So is that the completion of our public hearing for that?
Any public comment?
No public comment, okay, let's move to 13, and let's get this certificate approved for the completion and opening for the new city street. Any motion?
Non-motion that we accept the certificate approved completion of the new city street at Northern Avenue Federal.
Okay, motion made by Eric, and seconded by Marie. Any further discussion of the council? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Record reflects six zero in bay. Okay, so we got some signage for 71 North Main Street.
Yes, you approved signage for Thirsty Thrifters, which was a new storefront that Paquette Realty created when they downsized the rest of their office. But Paquette asked if we could help them pay for the cost of moving their sign over, so that Thirsty Thrifters and their office would be balanced on the facade, and also make it a higher-quality sign than what they currently have, and match the quality of the proposed Thirsty Thrifters sign. So you have a concept in your packets, and we're proposing the same deal, where we take the quote, we add a 5% contingency, and then the city commits to up to half of that amount as a grant.
1352 is a limit of our viability?
No.
Have they indicated at all moving the awning over too? Because it would fit right over their sign.
I think that's what they're talking.
No, they're just talking about the sign.
The awning looks weird.
The awning looks weird, so I talked to her about the awning. So the awning also benefits Thirsty Thrifters, so they don't want to remove the awning. Just in terms of blocking out the sun in the summer, and providing a shelter from the rain when it rains. They'll, they'll see if they can remove the Paquette from the edge of the awning, but...
That would be topical.
But in the meantime, what we're going to end up doing is like, Thirsty Thrifters will have their sign space, Paquette will have their sign space, Thirsty Thrifters is also going to have the projecting sign that we're going to assist them with, so I think we're still improving the situation overall.
A motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the sign for, yeah, 71 North Main.
Up to 1352?
Yep, up to 1352.
Motion made by Trudy, seconded by Chad. Any further discussion regarding the sign for 71, sign grant for 71 North Main Street? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those against, nay. Record reflects six zero in favor of the signing grant up to 1352, okay. I can have a surprise for you. We have redevelopment items, we're, city manager, let us, will Phil say?
Sure, there's a memo in your packet and proposed purchase and sale agreement for the Ralston redevelopment project. Council has put a desire, a priority to discuss, to ensure that protections for market-grade housing remain in place. And I ask for a motion, authorize manager to sign a membership interest purchase agreement with those protections, please.
I will make a motion to authorize city manager to sign the membership interest purchase agreement for the Ralston Development Project with the terms that we discussed earlier.
Motion made by Trudy, seconded by Eric regarding the Ralston. Any further discussion? Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, we'll move on to item number B.
I'd like to make a motion to table the conspiracy of authorizing a grant of $10,000 for redevelopment fund to artists and residents for a roof replacement.
Motion made by Chad to table, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Chad, second by Trudy to table the grant of $10,000 to artists and residents. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Let the record reflect six zero in favor of the motion to table. Item number C, consider a motion to authorize the grant of $10,000 from the redevelopment fund to Jeff's Main Seafood.
A motion to authorize...
I got to keep my sound. Okay, we have a recusal by Chad Woodgrove.
I'll make a motion to authorize the grant of $10,000 from the redevelopment fund to Jeff's Main Seafood for building improvements and fit up.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Eric, second, uh... Okay, okay, all right, I messed up, I messed up. Okay, no, I, where, you were Jeff's Main Seafood, right? Okay. Motion made, I, I, for some reason, I didn't think you said that. $10,000 by Eric, second by Marie. Any discussion on the council further? And I'm sorry, I didn't ask, is there any public comment? Nope, no public comment. Um, any, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those nay. Let the record reflect, we are in favor, six zero for $10,000 to Jeff's Main Seafood for dining and device. Oh, $5,000?
$1,000.
Yeah. $1,000, all five in favor, and one exception.
$10,000.
$10,000, yeah. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to bypass item 16 and 17 for the next meeting when the mayor can be here. Both 16 and 17, entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to bypass 16 and 17.
Motion made by Trudy, second by Chad. All those in favor signify. Any further discussion?
I just one thing, I was just going to ask during mine, um, are they, now that the trees are all coming down the park, is there any plan to start putting trees in the park?
I'll take that one. We've been talking to Kelly Wakefield about that plan. And one of the reasons why we're taking the trees down is because there are just too many in that southern end of the park and they're killing the grass. And so, I think we're going to take that into account. We don't want to just end up with too many trees again. So, give us a little bit of time.
Do we have any move on artists for the stumps?
I don't know about that, I don't have that update. Do you have a chainsaw?
Isn't there a guy?
You can try it out, Eric.
Motion and second to bypass 16 and 17 until the mayor can be here, because I'm sure he's interested in all the comments. Any further discussion?
And you're not. Well played, artist.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, let the record reflect, we're going to, uh, starting from 16 and 17. All right, someone go ahead with 18 and 19.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from 3:10:25.
Motion made for, by Trudy.
Second.
Second by Marie. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. I'll motion to approve the warrant. 3:31:25.
Motion made by Trudy, second by Marie for approval of warrants, 3:31:25. Any further discussion in the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Eric. Second by Chad. Any further discussion in the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those no, nay. Okay, we're done.
That's how you do it.